Regional School Board of Directors to Committee the whole meeting for October 23, 2023. Ms. Wolf, roll call.
Ms. Old Terry, here.
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 Mr. Azalina?
Here.
Mr. Mediterato?
Here.
Mr. Krensky?
Here.
Mr. Pizlofsky?
Here.
Mr. Wyman?
Here.
Mr. Yant?
Present.
Mr. Raymond?
Here. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're in executive session for legal, contractual, and safety. Superintendent's report, Dr. Prano.
I'm excited to have a number of students with us today. Our focus today are some great things happening out of our middle school in terms of our Student of the Month program, as well as our students who competed in a pretty special competition. I'm going to turn this over at this point to Dr. St. Amont and Ms. Berg.
Thanks for having us again. We're very excited to be back this year with our Student of the Month program. We have a couple of things going on at the middle school right now, and I just wanted to give a quick update on our Panther Pride system, our PBIS. And so similar to what we talked about last year, students who do great things get blue tickets. If you get a blue ticket, you get put into a drawing to win a gift card at the end of the nine weeks. And this is, these are students caught doing something good. We spend the first week of school going over all of our expectations in the hallways, in the classroom, on the bus, in the cafeteria, and in the restrooms. And students who get caught doing something good in the hallways or the cafeteria or any of those places, then they get a blue ticket. But one of the things after wrapping up last year and taking feedback from students, one of the things that we got was there are just some kids who do great things all the time, and they don't really get recognized because they are consistently above the bar. And so they said, you know, we appreciate that there are kids that get blue tickets who may not do great things all the time, but we kind of come here, we do what we're supposed to do every day, we do our homework, we keep our locker clean, we do all of this. And so this year, we added the golden ticket. And so throughout the nine weeks, we give out golden tickets to the House's vote on a student that just comes in and does what they are supposed to do every day. And so once in nine weeks, we are going to have a golden ticket party. And so the golden ticket party is just something a little bit special. Only the students who get the golden tickets are invited, and we will be holding that this Thursday in our administration buildings because we want it just a little bit different. So they're setting up the conference room for us, they're going to have cake, we have great decorations. Our PBIS committee of teachers have been wonderful in planning this. They really just took the ball and ran with it. Ms. Samples, Ms. Higgins, Kristy Linna Berry, can you help me remember all of my, Ms. Mahood? Thank you. I don't want to forget anybody, and I'm thinking up here, but they have just been amazing. And so what I am going to do is I'm going to give Donna some invites to our golden ticket party. So if any of you would like to come, you are welcome to come. And then moving on, we still have our Student of the Month program. And our Student of the Month program, as I had said before, we like to look at all of those five Cs, we look at our Panther Pride values, and each month, we have one characteristic that we look for. And so the House teachers vote on two students that exemplify that characteristic, and for the month of September, it was communication. And then once the House teachers nominate students who communicate very well, we recognize them, we give them some ice cream at lunch, and then we send out to all of the middle court teachers and other staff members, all of those nominees, and then they vote. And then that narrows it down to one representative for each grade level. So for the month of September, we would like to recognize our Students of the Month. And so if, for grade six, A.J. Rogers could come up. Perfect. For grade seven, Brooke Sikora.
So much very good.
And for grade eight, Joshua Vinton. And we just, we really appreciate everything that they bring to the school, and we're just so thankful that they truly do come in and help us make every day a great day to be a Panther, so we're very proud of them.
Thank you.
And we will let them step into the hallway now, and we'll take some pictures. So I'll meet you right out there. You can sit.
Congratulations, guys.
And then now I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Danny, who has some very special students who were able to go to Palm Springs about a month ago because they won a competition that they worked very hard for and really had to do, I mean, everything with the five Cs: collaboration, communication, critical thinking, they had to creatively problem-solve, be good citizens. And so I'm going to call Elise Mooney and Melana Andrico up with Mr. Danny. And before I turn it over to them, I do want to recognize Mr. Danny as well, who also received an award from the dam safety organization.
At home, can you hear us? Well, thanks for having us tonight. And Dr. St. Amont mentioned the five Cs, so I'll start there. It has been a pleasure to do this activity with the girls and the students at the middle school. We're always, as teachers, trying to engage our kids in the real world, what that looks like. We can talk about collaboration, citizenship inside our own walls, but when you get to work with professionals who do it and engage, and that's their philosophy, and they hear about what our kids are doing, and it matches, that's a lot of fun. So tonight, I'm going to introduce a few people from the organization that we worked with and some engineers throughout the country, and the girls had a tremendous opportunity. They're not the only students who got this opportunity. There are a bunch of kids, some in this room, some parents whose sons and daughters, you know, entered this competition as well and got this experience. So I'm excited for you to see the five Cs in action and to meet some people that are on the TV here, who in their real lives and in their jobs, that's what they are passionate about, and especially infrastructure of dams. So we obviously have content that we're covering at the middle school, but when you can relate it to the real world, and that extension, for me, when I was growing up, I couldn't remember a lot of those things that my teachers were trying to teach us, but when there was a real-world application that I felt passionate about, that's where the rubber met the road. So tonight, I have four individuals that I would like to introduce, and then they'll be speaking to you. I'll keep it brief, a few minutes with all of these individuals, then we'll get to hear the girls talk about what their experience was like. I'll go down the order. With the ASDSIO organization, we have Ben Webster, who works at Shaw Mole Engineering as well. I have Chad Davis from HDR, it's an engineering company. He is with ASDSIO. Tom Bold with the Department of Environmental Protection Agency of Pennsylvania and Carmen Labs. So these are a few of the people that have worked with our students this year and in the past, and we know them very well at Franklin Regional. They really respect what our kids are doing, and they're doing it because of people like Dr. St. Amont and Ms. Berg, who take the time to really focus on those five Cs. So I appreciate that. I also then want to, you know, mention the girls, who are the big reason for this night. Melana and Elise have been a pleasure to work with, and I'm really excited for you to get to see their work. So our Board of ASDSIO members and engineers and the Department of Environmental Protection Agency, I'll let you go through the agenda, and then if you're able to hang with us after the girls present, if the Board would like to ask any questions, we have some time built in for you. So we'll start with, Ben, are you okay with introducing the competition?
Sure, sure. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yep.
All right. I'm hoping you won't hear some kids in the background here, so we'll give it a shot. So my name is Ben Webster, as A.J. said. I work for a company called Schnabel Engineering, and I've been working on dams and critical infrastructure for about 15 years. So through that, I got involved in the Association of State Dam Safety Officials, and that's a mouthful, but it's easier said just by ASDSIO. That organization is made up of professionals that work almost exclusively on dams, so it's about 4,000 people across the nation, myself, I'm in Lexington, Kentucky, so a little bit far away from you all, but certainly happy to be here and thank you for the time to speak to you tonight. ASDSIO is made up of each state's dam safety representatives. So each state has a program within state government that's focused on protecting dams: inspections, consultant review, and consultants work, those types of things. So they largely make up the ASDSIO, and then the balance of that is consultants like myself, others in the industry that practice and work on that infrastructure as well. So about 4,000 folks across the U.S. Within ASDSIO, I chair the Committee on Career Development and Student Outreach, and that committee is what the competition that we're talking about here tonight comes out of. So it started about four years ago. We had an idea that if we could get students interested in dams at an early age, that maybe that would spark an interest, and maybe one day, they could become engineers or professionals that work on dams or critical infrastructure. So Mr. Danny's class has won this competition two out of the four years, that's pretty strong, and certainly appreciate what A.J. has done and what the students have done, you know, the hard work that goes into what they have to do really in a short timeframe. You know, it starts by them putting together what you would consider a proposal, so a plan for what they want to build, a budget, all the materials that they would need, and then if they're selected, they get to do that, right? And they've got a few months to throw it together, and then get to come to the National ASDSIO Conference, like the girls did in Palm Springs this year. So really excited for the work that A.J.'s doing. You know, what you do and what your students do really epitomizes the objectives and the mission of the committee, and specifically that competition, to get students interested as early as possible in the field of engineering. And it doesn't have to be dams, but a bonus that it is, I guess, from my perspective. So that's it for me, Mr. Danny, unless...
I appreciate that, Ben. Thank you so much. We're going to turn it over to Chad Davis. Chad, are you okay with talking about your role with our students in Franklin Regional the last few years, and then you could talk about what you do with your company as well?
Absolutely. Hopefully, you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. So I'm Chad Davis. I actually work in Pittsburgh with HDR Engineering, which is downtown, and we have about 160-some folks there. I got introduced to Mr. Danny through ASDSIO. He had reached out to the committee and was looking for some information and some engineering support for the STEM program. It was back in 2020, I received an email, we got connected up, and I think for a few years there, on Engineers Week, which is in February, we've worked together to create, you know, an hour-long presentation or, you know, 40-some minutes worth of content for his classes. And I know I presented the last couple of times on dams, and hopefully, it spun some interest and some interest with and around that. It's definitely something that I've been passionate about through my whole career. I've worked on probably easily 40-some dams, most of them within the region, and it just is great to see those projects be constructed and built, and, you know, that infrastructure is going to be there to support the communities and obviously provide recreational opportunities for everyone around. So I think ASDSIO obviously created this program, which is a great, you know, introduction to that, Ben, and it's great to see these kinds of students have that opportunity to be a part of that, and hopefully, you know, they embrace them through the rest of their career. That's something that definitely, you know, our industry is trying to do more so throughout, you know, the student programs in the high school and to the collegiate level. So Ben, appreciative to be part of it. Congratulations, girls, you did a great job, and it was definitely wonderful to see you out at Palm Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We'll turn it over to Mr. Bold, if you're able to talk on, you know, your role with the department.
Yeah, thanks, A.J. I apologize, can't see me, I don't know why my camera's not working. I went through all the settings and everything, I can't figure out what's going on here, but hopefully, you can hear me?
Yes.
All right. So I work with the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection with the Division of Dam Safety, in charge of our preparedness and enforcement section. So we deal a lot with emergency action planning and making sure our dams are, you know, structurally sound, bring them up to speed to meet our regulations through our compliance activities. I was fortunate enough to meet A.J. a couple of years ago in Nashville when they did the Low Head Dam Project and won that award. We've stayed in touch, I guess, pretty much since then, and he reached out again this past year with a project they were doing for RCC overtopping protection. So I was able to, you know, provide some dams for them to go out and visit that we had plans in, that were going to be a project for RCC here in the future. Also shared some, like, inundation mapping to kind of show that if a dam were to fail, where that water's going to go, what's going to be impacted, and explained a little bit as to why we do these overtopping projects. You know, dams that have inadequate spillways where they can't pass these design storms, and the dams could actually overtop, so they use some kind of armoring of the embankment so they don't erode and fail. And so we've worked together in that capacity here the last few months, and I congratulate him and his classes the last two of the four years on winning this. We'll see you back.
Thank you, Mr. Bold. Carmen, I will tell the board here just how impactful you were with the girls as the technical advisor, leading the girls on some technologies that not many sixth graders around the world know about. So thank you for your patience and just your, like, drive to allow this concept to make sense for the girls. And I am not an expert in the dam field, but, you know, the association provides engineers to help people like me who want to try to bring something to life with connecting with people like Chad and Carmen. So Carmen, if you wouldn't mind talking about your experience working with the girls, that would be wonderful.
Definitely. Thanks for inviting me.
Sorry.
Are we good?
I can't find my phone.
Hold on one second, Carmen.
I apologize.
You got the charge.
I can't tell if I was getting background or if what was going on.
Sorry.
So my name is Carmen Lapp. I'm based in Philadelphia, and I've been working as a civil engineer for seven years exclusively on dams. I've always wanted to be a dam engineer, I say always, since I went to engineering school, I wanted to be a dam engineer, I guess I should say. And I was just so fortunate with Melana and Elise just to hopefully inspire the next generation of female engineers. I think that there's something really great about having someone to maybe look up to, but also they've inspired me to continue to give back to the STEM community as well as the engineering community. I connected with Mr. Danny, I would say sort of at a chance, but also a lot of hard work. My office got a call one winter break last year from some students at Franklin Regional, and through many strokes of luck, it ended up on my desk, and I was able to connect with Mr. Danny as a student, and it's just been really rewarding. And I think that what inspires me about them is that they've been able to understand and grasp these really complicated engineering topics. I went to four years of engineering school and got my master's, and they are just doing a great job on understanding, they are now the experts in roller compacted concrete overtopping protection on dams, which is a mouthful, and just trying to work through all these different things and find out what interests them, I think, was really great, and I think they've done a great job. And Mr. Danny with a great support network of engineers, and I think there's something to be said about all of us engineers lifting each other up because we need more engineers in the world, and I think we're looking at a few more of them, hopefully.
Thank you, Carmen. That was really nice. So you could see, this is our team, we're almost like a coaching network. I'm the coach, and I'm connecting our team to these really important roles here, people that have really important roles. Girls, I will turn it over to you, and if you wouldn't mind talking to us about, you know, some of the things that you experienced, and you can come over to the mic.
Hello, my name is Elise Mooney.
And I'm Melana Andrico. And when we went to California, we thought we were going to have to talk in front of a big group of people for a long time, but we were incorrect, and we had a little booth, and we had our presentation running, and only a couple people at a time would come up to our booth. And only like after lunch was when a bunch of people would come in, and a lot of people would stop at our booth.
We also thought it was going to be just meetings of us presenting our model, but it turned out that we were in a big room presenting to little groups of people, and in total, we spoke to over 1,000 engineers.
When people came up to our booth, we introduced ourselves, and then we gave details about the dam we modeled and how we fixed the problem. And then we demonstrated what the problem would look like, and then we put in our technology and demonstrated how that would work.
And we gave the chance to the engineers to ask any questions. We wanted our presentation to be fun, so we created a game using Kit Kats, and the Kit Kats had the same exact shape as what our technology looked like. So the engineer would have to flip it over, and we had a fact on the back of it, and they would have to keep getting, reading the facts, and then they would have to flip them over and then keep stacking them up until it looked like a staircase.
So another game we had, it was similar to the game called Headbands, and we had multiple cards with words that, they were words that had something to do with our dam. So we would have one person put the card on their forehead without looking at the word, and then another person had to try to give them clues about that word, and whenever they got it, they would come over to our model and they would guess what it had to do with the dam, and then we explained it to them.
There were also optional meetings that you could attend where other engineers would talk about their topics.
We feel like this experience helped us by making us better speakers and making us more confident in ourselves and helping us to speak to others.
This also impacted our life because we got to learn something new. We never knew what a dam was before learning about this. Having an opportunity to win something like this is amazing.
In the convention center, there were many other booths, and we got to go around and talk to the other companies about what they did, and we got to learn more about dams, which was really fun, and we had many opportunities to learn new things.
We also had a special fancy lunch with all of the members of the ASDSIO and all of the participating companies, and the lunch was made like an award ceremony, and it was where people would get some of the rewards that they received. And also, our teacher, Mr. Danny, won an award.
We would like to thank the Danny family for all their help. They took school lunches, ninth periods, and a lot of their summer to help us with our project, and we thank all of the Danny kids, too, for always having a smiling face, and that encouraged us to keep going.
That's nice.
We talked with a lot of important people that Mr. Danny has named. Carmen is one of the people that helped us, she provided us with information so we can learn more about the topic. Chad Davis also helped us by answering some of the questions and concerns we had. Also, Tom Bold helped us by giving us dams around PA that needed this technology.
Although I'm not sure if I'm going to be a dam engineer when I grow up, this experience has impacted me in many hopeful ways. I enjoyed this experiment, experience, and can't learn to learn more.
Thank you both. Actually, I would like to jump in with a question because I had the privilege of being able to listen to them talk about their project, and I know a little bit about their project and what they did, and I was super impressed with their depth of knowledge, but also the solutions that they had as it related to their dam. So explain your project to the board, the problem at hand, and then your solutions.
So the first one we made was the one in the clear container. It's a to-scale model of the North Fork Dam, and the problem that it has right now is it's really close to overtopping, which is when there's too much water in a dam, and if the water would go over the dam, it would erode all of the land around it. So instead, you would add a new technology called RCCs, which is roller compacted concrete, and if that would, that would help water slow down while it's going down.
Wow.
We also have some Kit Kats to pass out to you guys.
We have some Kit Kats.
And on it, it has a QR code of our presentation if you want to...
So real quick, with a dam that has the grass, and it doesn't have the technology that you integrated, show how that part moves and what happens when it goes over, and we can see potentially on the screen. There we go.
So this would equal nine inches of rain, and so that's how much water, that's how much rain would have to come down for it to overtop, and it would, it would push out, like, the wall, the dam wall, and the whole town would be flooded. But if you add the roller compacted concrete in and double the amount of water, and you push with double the force, it doesn't come out.
It was fun to see the girls not only build this, but then with their outreach. Part of their proposal was doing community outreach, so they traveled to Johnstown, which was a very, you know, sentimental place with the South Fork Dam and the history that's there, and they presented to the community because most of the community members thought that they, you know, they're in the clear, but they forgot about their sister dam, the North Fork here. So we really appreciate everybody from the organization that helped connect the dots, and if anybody had questions for the girls or for the association that is on the screen, you're welcome to ask a few questions. I don't want to monopolize your meeting time, so...
I just had a quick question, actually, for you, more for you, Mr. Danny, is can you explain a little bit of the process? I'm very pleased to see this organization of other people outside coming back into the school, helping, getting that group together, and seeing that the kids can apply something to presentation, to the actual engineering problems, building, the creativity, building the model. But can you explain a little bit from the school perspective of how a teacher like yourself is enabled to organize this, put this together, how difficult it may be, and what we can do to kind of lower those barriers so that more projects like this are happening in the school district?
Right behind me, if they're still here, Dr. St. Amont and Ms. Berg will do anything for me. I tell them about an idea, and they're, they'll do anything. What do you need? Do you need a cover to call this team? Do you, can I get you something? Can I bring you lunch? I mean, they'll let the kids come down to lunch early. I mean, these are little things that are big things for a project like this to happen. Having ninth period for the kids to meet, like, in just that system, the system we have in place allows for this. If this is something the kids are passionate about, we have a system in place where the kids can come and to do these types of enrichments. So, and again, it's fun when kids aren't really into the content of renewable, non-renewable, but when they see that end product of infrastructure, there's a lot of opportunities, and they get this, and it, it's fun. They really, the dots are connected, and the way that happens is having Dr. St. Amont and Ms. Berg. Like, by far, I could not do this without their support, and then, you know, connecting the dots, okay, you can do this, you know, and we're all a part of the team. the dots, okay, you can do this, you know, and we're all a part of the team. So I appreciate, that's a great question.
And also you had other students work on this as well. How were you able to, were you able to, I guess would be the better question, to incorporate some of the things that the girls learned from the competition into the classroom setting? Is that an ongoing process? Do you still work on that and learn each year how to do that?
Yeah, great question. Yeah, and Chad actually, a few years ago, that was, that was his role of, you know, getting the kids engaged and he spoke to our students at Franklin and then that was a precursor to the competition that got the kids interested in this. And, you know, it's fun, the kids will present during ninth periods to their classmates and, you know, looking down the road, I'm working closely with, with Tom and his, his team for the Department of Engine, with the department. And what we're doing is at the conference, we created this sidebar team where states around Pennsylvania are looking at what we're doing here and they would like to do this and we're giving them the recipe and we're trying to, you know, include other states more actively in this process. And what our goal is, is to do a, a course with the students to show them what this is and then, you know, with the states and then from that lead into the competition. So we're gonna connect more kids together from other states around us to see what the impact, how similar and how different, you know, the scenarios are with their dams in their state. So that's another great question. Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you, girls.
At home, thank you so much. Thanks for staying and talking.
Thank all your panel behind us, they did a good job.
I felt like I had my very own. Mr. President, that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
I just very, just, just real quick, I'll be two seconds. I just want to give a quick, so this is, this is all part of the curriculum in sixth grade. So this isn't like a couple of kids came and did a competition. This is part of the curriculum. All of the students in sixth grade got to go on a field trip to see a dam, see how things work, do part of that. Anybody that needs extra help, Mr. Danny, Mr. Sadler, Mr. Stoner, they work together to pull them in, to give them the extra help, but then they also do this enrichment, these enrichment activities for the kids that are ready to go above and beyond. And Mr. Danny takes it a couple of steps further every time because he does amazing things along with, with his team. But, so this is all part of the curriculum. So this isn't just, you know, a competition that they enter, this is part of the curriculum. So I just want to give Mr. Danny that extra shout out that this is all part of everything. And I appreciate you giving us this time.
Thanks for the Kit Kat. You're right. Okay, that's it.
And that concludes the superintendent's report for this evening.
Thank you very much.
There's nothing else we can, that we can present this tonight that will be as exciting as what we just saw.
That's the best parts when the students come on here. Okay, public comments. We have two, Amy Sheridan.
Our folks on the teleconference, are they, do they still need to, they're good?
You're free to go, guys. You can turn your, you're finished. Thanks, Chad.
Yeah, that was, that was so impressive. I can't believe they're sixth graders. All right, I'm Amy Sheridan, 2785 Walker Court, and I'm the parent of a 10th grader. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to the board and into the community. I'm here at the podium again to follow up on my remarks from last month when I was talking about how much work is required for the school to earn such great rankings in the US News and World Reports, rank, school rankings. And that was really a big deal. And then I got to thinking about, and there's one thing I didn't mention, so if you'll humor me, there's more to the story of FR excellence than just the administration, the school board, the teachers, the staff, and that's the community. So one thing that happens when you spend most of the last few months talking to a lot of citizens is we talk about, people sometimes say, well, I just feel like we're so divided. And I mean, that's undeniably true. But I think when we, when we focus on our students, we don't see that at all. I think when we, we count on each other here, we count on each other as, we count on another parent to to, to coach tiny kid baseball or tiny kid soccer. And we're sure that someone will be there late at night at the sporting events that we as parents can't make it to. There are people here that make sure that there's an exceptional middle school play, even though they don't have a, a middle school student. The robotics mentors kids, they're all grown up, but those people are teaching the ninth grade kids more about robots and computers just because they enjoy it. Lots of folks step up to sell concessions after a long day of work and there are people quietly filling backpacks of food to be available to kids they don't know. Today I'm sending band pants to an FR grandma to be hemmed. So we count on each other in the community and I'm really proud of that spirit and I just want everyone to see that we see that the hard work that they're putting in and that when we are thinking about our kids, we're not divided at all. So that's it, thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Okay, Helen Elliott.
Good evening, Helen Elliott, 3166 Chestnut Street, and I'm here to back up the spirit of the school and commend our band. Our band has done outstanding job of representing Franklin Regional at all the football games and, and more recently, they attended two band festivals and did an outstanding job. And I, I just really am here to give them the kadoos that I, and I have a grandson in the band and so I'm very partial in that regard, but we do, and, and at the North Hills Band Festival, people sitting behind us commented on how good the Franklin Regional performance was out there. So we're, we're noticed also at other events. So thank you Franklin Regional Band and the people, the many people who participate in it, who are unseen, all the people who are moving the equipment and all of that. So that's what I'm here to say. Thank you Franklin Regional Band for representing us so well.
Thank you. Anyone, then, there's no one else who wants to speak out there? One more? Come on up. I need your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Abby Romaley and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. As a student in ninth grade in North Lawn Circle, Murraysville, PA 5001, I am giving this speech to address an issue that affects numerous other students like myself. We ask you to consider providing us with a holiday off by changing the off day from the first Monday of October, Columbus Day, to the day after Halloween. Growing up, Halloween has always been an exciting and cherished holiday for children. It allows us to express our creativity through costumes, enjoy the thrill of trick-or-treating with friends and family, and indulge in hard-won treats. However, the joy of Halloween is often overshadowed by the looming reality of school obligations the next day. It is disheartening to see students rushing through their trick-or-treating adventures or sacrificing quality time with friends and loved ones due to early bedtimes and school preparations. To have to head home for bedtime on the special night of Halloween, just as we would on any other night in the school year, is preposterous. Yet if we were to continue celebrating this once annual holiday as we should, the potential lack of rest would also affect our ability to focus during classes on November 1st, hindering academic performance and overall productivity. By providing us with a day off on November 1st, you are enabling students to celebrate this special holiday together in school while at the same time equipping us to celebrate during the evening and night as we should be able to. Furthermore, there are a total of three professional development and enact eighty days in the span of about four weeks around October 31st. By changing one of these days to November 1st, the schedule would not be negatively affected, but positively impacted. Here are some other key reasons why this change should be implemented. Number one, academic performance. Numerous studies have shown that adequate sleep positively impacts cognitive function and academic performance among students. By allowing students an extra day off after Halloween festivities, we can promote better rested minds, leading to improved learning outcomes throughout the year. Two, mental health. Taking into account mental health concerns among young individuals today, providing a break after Halloween can alleviate stress levels associated with balancing school responsibilities alongside holiday celebrations. This will contribute positively toward fostering healthier minds within our student community. Three, popular celebration. Halloween is an extremely popular holiday that is taken seriously and beloved by many students, whereas Columbus Day is only celebrated by students on account of the fact that school is off. It stands to reason that Halloween should be treated as a special day out of the school year and that responsibility to school should be alleviated in light of the celebration of this cherished day. I and my fellow students believe that public schools in Murraysville should recognize the importance of Halloween by providing students and faculty off with a day off on November 1st instead of on the second Monday of October each year. We are also willing to provide information demonstrating the interest in considering this appeal. Let's prioritize the well-being and enjoyment of our students while ensuring they have ample time to rest, recharge, and fully embrace the spirit of Halloween. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of public comments. Solicitors' comments.
I have nothing for public session.
Thank you. Okay, consent agenda items. Mr. Fulvo, you're up first. She's here tonight?
I'll be covering the first three items of the agenda tonight. The first item, in June of 2024, the district will be once again a host site for camp invention for students in grades K to six. They'll be using the Innovation Centers, Creativity Center, and cafeteria at the intermediate school. And we are seeking to gain approval to waive the facility use fees at the Franklin Regional Intermediate School to support this learning opportunity for students.
Anybody have any questions on the camp? Okay, case method.
The next two items were items that were up for curricular review for the past 30 days. The first one was the Case Method Institute materials. These materials we use for the senior high school AP prep social studies course.
Any questions?
How many people came to review it?
We had zero people come and review.
Thanks.
Okay, Natural High Ribbon Week.
The next item is the Natural High Ribbon Week website and videos. These will be used for students in grades six through 12.
Any questions? Thank you. Mr. Perry, gifts, grants, and donations.
Good evening. This month we have $36,500 in innovation grants from the Franklin Regional Panther Foundation.
Any questions on the grants? Thank you.
Next budget transfers this month, general fund budget transfers totaling $43,518.61.
Questions on budget transfers? Okay, electricity.
Yes, once again, proposing a, or looking to ratify a three-month electricity agreement for just the heritage service location. We've continued to have just short-term agreements for that service location as we continue moving forward with potentially deconstructing the building, so just extending it as short a period of time as possible to alleviate some of the volatility around the winter months.
Questions on electricity procurement? Okay, Series 221.
Yes, somewhat of a follow-up item in the spring. I presented to the board, having a few capital projects that had already been approved, have those funded with remaining proceeds from our last bond issuance. One of those particular projects was delayed, so it actually won't be completed by the January 5th, 2024 deadline to spend those funds. So I've proposed two replacement projects, the sewer line repairs and replacements completed on the main campus, as well as network switch equipment at the middle school. And then finally, using proceeds to actually pay the November 1st bond payment on that series of 2021 debt, which is also an eligible use, just to ensure that those proceeds are spent by that January 5th, 2024 deadline.
Any questions? Closing, closing investments.
Yes, each year we approve depositories and investment accounts for the district and this motion is actually recommending closing two accounts that we have. We have a number of accounts with local banking institutions just to maintain a relationship in case an attractive investment opportunity would present itself. However, with a couple of the institutions, during my 12 years here, we really haven't had any opportunities that are competitive with some of the other offerings that we have from financial institutions. So just recommending closing a couple of accounts to mitigate risk of having too many accounts open and, you know, the potential for, you know, unauthorized access to accounts with online sign-ins and whatnot in this day and age.
Questions on closing investments? Assignment contract for transportation.
Yes, this is just requesting that the board consent to the assignment of our transportation contract with A.J. Myers to Myers Transportation, Inc. We've been assured that we will see no change in the day-to-day operations and it shouldn't have any impact on our students or the families in our district.
Any questions?
It stays within the Myers, it goes to a different Myers.
Correct. They are shifting some of the ownership structure that they have, so it's still part of a Myers family. However, it's just.
So are we with Myers Transportation or?
Myers Transportation would be the new.
The new, okay.
Counterparty to our transportation agreement.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Perry.
Thank you.
Mr. Matsey.
Good evening. Make a recommendation to, motion to approve a boiler preventive maintenance with construction, combustion service equipment. It would be for all of our boilers in the district and all our schools. It's a twice-a-year inspection, summer and winter, and it has shown savings over the years we've had this with them.
Any questions on the boiler? Okay, FRI Advanced Builders Application.
I make a motion to approve payment request for advanced builders for the site completion at the elementary campuses.
All that work's complete?
All the work is complete. There's some warranty work happening right now, but that has nothing to do with this.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Matsey.
Thank you.
Mr. Dope, you're back up. Policy review.
We're seeking approval for the first reading of the policies below. Three policies this evening. Policy 217, graduation. Policy 800, records management. And policy 800.1, electronic signatures and records.
Any questions on policy review first read? Okay, policy review second read.
Seeking approval for a second reading and adoption of the policies below here. Policy 006, meetings. Policy 216.1, supplemental discipline records. Policy 251, students experiencing homelessness, foster care, and other educational instability. Policy 830, security of computerized personnel information, breach notification. And policy 830.1, data governance, storage, and security.
Questions on policy for second read? Okay, personnel. Page 34.
Close my back too early. Seeking approval for the personnel items below to be provisionally approved upon submission of the appropriate documentation.
Any questions on personnel? Page 34 through 38. Okay, Dr. Dope, thank you. Mr. Matsey, you're back up again.
Okay, one last thing. A motion to approve a proposal for trans associates for a post-occupancy traffic study at the elementary campuses.
Were they, the people did the first ones?
Correct.
Correct, yes, sir.
Any other questions? Traffic study? Thank you, Mr. Matsey.
Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to adjourn the committee of the whole meeting.
Listen, adjourn.
Second.
Move second and Mark and Bill. Thank you, guys. Okay, we're gonna move into the Monday, October 23rd, 2023 Franklin Regional Board of School Directors' Regular Meeting. I'm gonna stand for the salute to flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Reading of the mission statement. We, the Franklin Regional School Community, strive for excellence, learning, achievement, and citizenship in all we do. Roll call, Ms. Wolf.
Here.
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 Present.
Here. Thank you. All right, I need a motion to approve the committee of the whole meeting minutes of September 18th, 2023, and the regular meeting minutes for September 18th, 2023. Need a motion?
So moved, Scott.
Second.
Moves Scott, second, Vince. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Okay, future dates and upcoming topics, Mr., Dr. Prino.
So under future dates, the policy committee and technology committee meeting scheduled for November 1st are, will not be happening, they're not necessary. November 13th, we will have a curriculum committee meeting at 5:00 PM in the administrative offices. November 15th, we'll have a finance committee meeting at 5:00 PM in the administrative offices. And on November 20th, we will have our committee of the whole and regular board meetings at 7:30 here in the municipal building. Looking at future topics, they include a curriculum review, policy review, personnel, and gifts, grants, and donations. And that includes future dates and upcoming topics.
Thank you, Dr. Prino. I can, you the motion to approve the treasures report for September 2023.
So moved.
Ed, second, Diana. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. List of bills, paid bills. General fund, $3,461,166.14. Athletic fund, $8,180.84. Construction fund, $335,144.97, for a total of paid bills of $3,804,491.95. Unpaid bills. General fund, $1,714,557.97. Capital reserve fund, $34,950. Athletic fund, $32,953.52. Construction fund, $471,005.57. Million, $57,959.1. Food service, $22,560.40, for a grand total, including food service, of $6,80,519.46. Need a motion to list the bills.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Ed and Bill. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Solicitors' comments.
No comment for public session, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Matta. Consent agenda items. Consent agenda items for separate action by a board member to be removed.
I'd like the motion for separate action for number nine.
Got it. Any other ones? I need a motion to approve one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15.
So moved, Mark.
Moved, Mark.
Second.
Tracy. Comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Okay, number nine was pulled by Mr. Zello. And it's because.
I'd like to abstain.
Yes. So you have to fill a form out with Ms. Wolf when you're done here.
Yep.
All right. I need a motion to approve consent agenda item number nine.
So moved, Mark.
Moved, Mark.
Second.
Ed, comments? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries eight. And one abstention. And I need a motion to adjourn the voting meeting.
So moved.
Moved, Ed. Second, Diana. Bill, you're slipping by. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? See you in November.